Lemon.
I didn't know.
It's horrific.
I just like the lemon.
No, it's terrible.
It's so gross.
All right, we're going to go ahead and begin tonight's council conference. We have one item on the agenda, and it is another budget update regarding the Senior Wellness Center project. I will turn it over to Mr. Olson, our director of Parks and Recreation, to kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for letting me talk today about the Senior Wellness Center. Coming with you with another story of market fluctuation today. Going to kind of hit you with some what is not so good news with upward construction and this, how the market is treating all construction processes or projects, not just ours. It's kind of a worldwide problem right now. But first, I just want to give everybody a quick reminder about the Senior Wellness Center and how it's laid out. We'll start at the bottom left-hand corner. Of course, that's our swimming pool, and this is a saltwater, temperature-controlled pool. Connected to that, just to the right, are our cabanas, which are our open dressing rooms, which anybody can go change in, with men's and women's locker rooms. Next to that is a fitness classroom. That pink area right there next to that is our admin and wellness areas. Those wellness areas can be used for anything, for doctor visits, to pedicure, manicures, massages, anything that, mental health appointments, anything that you would really need some privacy for. Of course, we have our main lobby entrance right there, connected to a kitchen and a coffee bar. This kitchen is set up for a demonstration-type kitchen, opening up to the multipurpose room. And that multipurpose room C, you can see there on the bottom right-hand corner, is a raised stage area where we can have performances, classes, almost anything you can imagine kind of going on in this area. Moving on, we have wet and dry craft areas with a storage compartment right in between there, more restrooms, a game room, a lounge, a large open fitness area with a walking track, which was our number-one most requested item in a senior wellness center. And then, right outside of that, we have outdoor pickleball courts that is just a short walk away from everything right there. And pickleball, if anybody doesn't, if you don't know about pickleball, then you need to get on the craze because pickleball is crazy right now and fastest-growing sport in the United States, and it's fun. I've done it a couple times myself.
Move with the mayor. We did one.
It is a great time, so. Here's this outside look at this. This is a redrawn illustration of what you've kind of seen before. There's been a little, a few VE items that's changed, which is value engineering, that's kind of changed the look outside. One of it is the portico, that's portico J, make sure I say that right for everybody that always corrects me on our calls. Originally, that was designed to cover some parking areas, the handicap parking areas, but the, a full build-out of that was almost three-quarters of a million dollars, is about $750 million to, because in Oklahoma, you have to make sure that you anchor that properly, and it's, it's just a lot of concrete that's going into the ground, also messing with our inflated metal prices, which everybody's kind of experienced. So we had to cut that portion out. But everything else is pretty much what we've presented on the outside. Still a large entry walking into there, Senior Wellness Center, right underneath, that's our multipurpose far end, where you kind of sees another area. That's our swimming area, swimming pool. This is kind of a back-end view of it. You see the outdoor pickleball courts right there with a outdoor, indoor/outdoor lounge and the fire place out there where people can have outdoor activities and a large lawn for anything that our seniors might want to do outside. Now, we're going to kind of hop into our, the market. This is a worldwide market problem that we're having, seeing kind of inflations of upwards of 20% of what we were even experiencing when we first started getting some estimations on the cost of the structure. So this is kind of a, it looks like about a six-year view, and that red line is just the cost of raw materials that's represented with large construction projects. And as you can see, that's spread out pretty far, goes, takes a dip right before 2020, which we kind of know that's the start of the pandemic, and then it goes straight up. And any time that we think we're going to get some stability in our market, there seems like there's another world problem that happens that keeps on making that, that construction prices and materials difficult to get. This is even a little bit farther broke down. This is kind of even, this is from the Construction Association. I got this from one of our construction managers that we contract with. The blue line is what contractors are out there bidding. The red line is the actual cost of materials, which you can see even our contractors or the contractors out there are bidding have been taking a little bit of kick because in the pants, per se, in underbidding what the costs actually cost them because just how much the market has changed. And also, this blue line, where you kind of see around March, May of '21, still represents us, some of the materials were still in stock before everything kind of went crazy. But as I was told by our construction, one of our construction managers, this will eventually meet up again like it was in September 2020, and everything will end up. But once again, the red line is the actual construction, cost of construction materials, and the blue line is kind of where everybody's bidding at. Our current project budget, just to go over where we are currently with the Senior Wellness Center. Our original Norman Forward budget for a senior center was zero. Through the good worker of our council and hard-working staff, we ended up finding $7.6 million savings from Griffin Park. We ended up leasing that land instead of purchasing land out there at Griffin Park, and we moved that over to the senior center. And we also had CARES Act funding, which is $4.8 million, which totaled our total budget for the senior center at $12.4 million. This is kind of a breakdown. You look at any construction project, we actually have a construction budget that's inside that $12.4 million, and soft costs. The soft costs are kind of representing between our architectural and engineering, permanent testing, FFNE. We have a lot of utility relocation out there at the site at Norman Regional. We did pay for a recreation gym design, and we have owner contingency that's kind of wrapped in there, and that is about $2 million. So our actual construction budget, as it stands today, is $10.4 million. So we have a construction manager, and our construction manager has bid out 100% of this project, and it bid out at, right at $12 million. So you can see all these amendments, and I'm sure they all remember these coming to you at different times throughout the past few months. And we ordered structural still super early in the process. That's our, the longest wait in the market. We're ready to go on demo, earthwork, and everything soon as we get that land in our possession. A few weeks ago, we did, went ahead and moved forward with HVAC. There's a, our HVAC contractor, which we were holding out on, called us and said there's going to be a 20% hike in the next few weeks if you don't get under contract, and we're going to pull our bid, and you're going to have to rebid that out. So we went ahead and put them under contract. In our final bid package, which we have not brought to you yet, and it's the reason we haven't brought it, brought it to you yet, it puts us way out of budget, but it's at $5.8 million right there for a total of $12 million. And if you remember, we had a $10.4 million construction budget. So, you know, I'm a recreation guy, but, you know, okay with math, I can realize that the alligator points in one direction, not necessarily towards that. So this is, kind of talks about our deficit. Our current construction budget is $10.4 million. Our 100% bitted-out construction cost is right at $12 million. So that leaves us a $1.6 million delta. But there is good news, a little bit of good news, if you, depends how, if you look at the cup half-full or half-empty. We do have a Norman Regional deal for a land swap and a sell at the property, and ironically enough, and I don't know how, if this is just dumb luck or how it just ended up, we're right at $1.6 million that's involved in that, that land exchange over there at Norman Regional. So we're hoping, what I'm kind of requesting today is that with consensus from, from council, that when we bring this item to you here in May for the final GMP, is that we use this money that is all wrapped up on this campus just for the senior wellness project. And I know that there is a few other commitments that has been talked about or possibilities for that $1.2 million, but hopefully, we can keep this all and build the Senior Wellness Center. Right here, kind of go a little bit farther into depth, this is not the high view that I've been kind of going over. There's certain, certain things that we have taken out of this project. So we initially bid this project a few months ago and rejected about 90% of those bids and sent it back to our architect and asked them to take things out. Value engineering, main portion of it was millwork, changing the roof surface, changing our asphalt depth out in the parking lot. I mean, we really went into the weeds to figure out how to, to take money out of this project without affecting the square footage inside this building, and I think they did a reasonably good job. When we bid out in February, we were looking at about, a total of about $12.4 million, and they brought that down, excuse me, it was $13 million, correct, Jason? So around $13 million, and they brought it down after we did some value engineering to just a hair below $12 million. These are some of the things that we took out when we valued engineered, and if we're able to grab that money that is involved on the Norman Regional campus, you can see some of the things that, that we are hoping to put back into the project that we valued engineered. Some of the stuff in there is aesthetics, and, and aesthetics is important in this building to our ad hoc committee. They have, they have spoke many times, and we've had a lot of meetings, and we've talked about it, aesthetics inside. We want this building to be comfortable. We want to be a place where our seniors want to gather and spend some time. And we had to pull some of these items out, but we're hoping with, with this $1.6 million that we're asking to keep on the campus, that we can put some of these things in. And you'll see an accepted line, and some of that stuff is rejected. And I would like to highlight the, one of the things that we are, that staff is recommending to reject is the multipurpose addition is a little, we are hoping to fit this all within scope and maybe grab some of this money and still build the gym, but it kind of looks, as it stands now, out of reach. But some of the things we're putting back in, you can kind of read down that list, copper feeders, millwork, lockers, sound panels, cabinets, wall tile elevations, flooring and stage curtains and things like that, this got, kind of got removed because we were just wanting to make sure that we get to some budget, and then at some point, we realized that the, the market is kind of steering us in a different direction, and we can't necessarily get within budget without some help. So this is the possible budget if, if we do keep all that money on the Norman Regional Campus inside the Senior Wellness Center. You can see that we added the, the sale of 718 North Porter for $1.2 million. We kept that $426,000 of cash that we're getting from the hospital inside this budget for a total of around $14 million. And this would be the proposed budget breakdown. Construction budget would, that money that we grabbed at $1.6 million would instantly go into our construction budget, and there would not be hardly any fluctuation on our soft costs. Those are, we're already under contract and have all that stuff designed, so, and the building's not getting bigger, so we don't need to buy any more furniture. So, so the soft cost would stay where it's at. All that $1.6 million would go straight into our construction budget. It's kind of everything that I have in a little bit of a nutshell, and love to take some questions. Got to love it when a Parks guy does a presentation because it's semi-short in speed.
Councilor Studley.
I'm just curious how much, because looking at your presentation, it seems that some of your fees are to add things back in, and some are construction. What, what is the cost of the necessary, or the money that you need for the construction versus money that you need to add back?
That's a good question. So adding these items in right here is actually, even though the size of our building is staying the same, we're going to, when we're adding these things back in, we're, we're talking about lowering the owner's contingency from four-and-a-half percent to 2%. So we would still have owner contingency, and that would not, that would just take a bite out of what we're, we have in contingency. If we don't have the $1.6 million, we don't have enough to kind of sign a, sign a contract. But just if we're able to keep all that money that we have inside the Norman Regional Campus and put that towards this project, we're, we're able to take a bite out of this. And we also left off, as you see the alternate three to seven and eight, we left some of the stuff completely off the list because it was just completely.
Right, but what is the construction cost, though? Like, these are, these, is the $1.6 million that you're asking for to cover, like, increase in lumber, increase in concrete, or is it just for these items? Like, is this total here?
This is not just that.
174?
That's 174,000. Like I said, we're, we're lowering our contingency, our owner contingency, by two-and-a-half percent. And our owner contingency, I don't have those numbers, but it was probably about a half-million dollars is where our owner contingency was when we could not afford this. Because the, the construction cost is still $2 million, or I wouldn't say $2 million, there's a $1 million out of that range. And so we're just trying, all we're doing is if we add these things in, which we don't necessarily have to add these things in.
But we're saying 1.4, then it sounds like is going towards construction, and another 200 is for these extra things to make it.
You could say that. The 1.6 is going towards, all these items are still construction items.
Okay. All right. Councilor Holman.
So we, we've briefly mentioned, too, about using savings from James Garner Boulevard Project, a Norman Forward Project, to potentially help out with these other Norman Forward Projects. I don't know where we're at on James Garner Boulevard savings and if we still want to do that or not, but.
So you all suggested one and a half million dollars. That did, we brought that to you in a previous item, that that did get soaked up all within the, we're having the same problems at Young Family Athletic Center. That all got soaked up into the Young Family Athletic Center. And we're, if we're able, and this is not probably exactly what you want to hear, but if we're able to move this $1.6 million from the Porter Campus and keep that inside the senior center, this construction project at, on Porter will be more, I mean, it's safer. We, we will be at budget. We will feel comfortable moving forward and not having to come back and ask for more money at a certain point. Young Family Athletic Center, we're, we're riding that line. We have zero contingency left in that, and you have to imagine when you have a $38 million building and construction prices are going up 20%, that the 20% of $38 million is a lot more than 20% of $10 million, so.
So, because we're using savings from James Garner to do enhancements on the bridge and do the roundabout art and stuff, we had talked about potentially using some of that as well for the senior center and the young center.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure how much is actually in there.
The current projected savings in James Garner is 2.8 million. We haven't bid the project, so we'd like to do that first around June. And Anthony can answer the question. We've already transferred some of that 2.8 into.
About 1.5.
Young Family, so if you don't have math, 1.3 is what's left of that projected savings.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that, since it's part of Norman Forward money, I guess. And then also want to make sure that there's nothing we're cutting out that might cost us, save us money now, but cost us more later. Like, is the parking lot having less thick asphalt saves us money right now, but does that just mean we're going to have to spend money to replace it faster? And maybe it costs more then to do it.
So there, question to that, the, the whole parking lot was rated for heavy-duty use, which was eight inches thick. We went, we took down the parking lot all to six inches of asphalt, and it still has a six-inch of rock base underneath that, and we feel pretty comfortable. We don't think there's going to be 18-wheelers or large machinery driving through this parking lot. It's going to be mainly just vehicles that are suited, and the minimum level for an average vehicle that is recommended is five inches. So we're still above that.
Okay. Well, that's kind of my, just my questions or concerns. I definitely want to see where we can save money, but I'm also not opposed to spending a little bit more if it meant that what we're getting lasts longer and doesn't cost us more later. So if that's not a concern, then I'm fine with that. And I don't, we don't really have that money in hand yet for the Porter thing or the land swap, so it's hard to say, I guess, how I feel about it. But I do want to make sure we get this project complete the way that folks expect it to. So I guess when we have the money in our account, we can make a decision.
We anticipate the ability to close any day now, just waiting on the time of company.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Hall.
So from this slide here, you've removed the multipurpose gym addition, so that's not part of this 1.6.
Correct.
Okay. And is the, is the multi, is the gym, is that shown on the, on the site?
The floor plan, it is not, but I can probably semi outline it for you.
Okay.
It's a little, I don't know if this has a mouse or not. Okay, there it is. The, what would happen if we did put a multipurpose rec gym out here, and it's, it's not just for pickleball. I know a lot of people have been saying pickleball, but basketball, volleyball, pickleball, of course. So the gym would actually span a little bit longer. I don't think we'd need as much concrete space out there, and it would kind of line up to here. They would move these restrooms and storage area over to a little square right around here, and this would be an open area to walk into the gym right there. And I'm trying to do this from, from memory, so this would actually open up this area around here. I'm not sure how great of descriptions I'm giving you, but, and free weights and all the, these would move right here against this, what would be the, the wall closest to the pool.
And Mr. Olson, that was bid out as an add-alternative?
Yes.
So we, that, it is awardable with a guaranteed price at this point?
It is awardable, and the only thing that I would add to that, that the basketball gym, rec gym would, it's not going to be any cheaper than it is right here because to, if you come back and build it at a certain period, that you have to remember, we're building a full wall, and then instead of being in addition to the construction, it will be a renovation project where we have to remove walls and concrete that's already been built to that, that point.
Well, I just, I'm trying to recall kind of the evolution of the gym because it was there, and then it wasn't there, and, but we, we have allowed in the design process the ability to add that at some point.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, it's laid out.
And we have drawings for it, so it's not like whenever, whenever council finds money for it, we have a future bond election. I mean, we don't have to go out there and wait for drawings for it. We, we have those drawing, we'll have those drawings in hand, and it should be, it should be a turnaround where we bid it, and if we have to bid it again, and be able to do the construction relatively quick.
Okay, so that, that is not, that's not on the table at the moment. We really.
Staff is not recommending that.
Okay. But we do have the possibility to consider that at a future time.
Correct.
Yeah. And that's designed in. Okay, that, that's kind of what I wanted to get clarification about that. And so the 1.6 that we're talking about really is primarily construction costs that are well beyond what we had imagined when we originally started. So that's really where we are. We've had similar discussions about the Young Family Athletic Center, and we have already allocated additional funding to continue forward with that project. So I just want to point out, and I'm really glad you showed that original slide about where this project started at the beginning, and that was at zero. And the 7.6 million was not tied to an actual design plan. It was what was available, which was a good thing. It was a very good thing that we could identify those funds, but it wasn't because the advisory committee sat down and worked with our partners to come up with the ideal senior center. It's like, it was kind of the reverse of that. Here's what we have, here's what we had the ability to locate, and here's how we funded it. And that, in turn, kind of explains the next large allocation of the 4.8 million to really get it closer to what our senior advisory group was recommending, and the public processes that were held along the way to involve, we had a survey, we had a very robust response to the survey, we had meetings here that seniors were able to come in and, you know, help establish what really their priorities were. So, you know, we also didn't have a location, and I just want to remind everybody that this is the sixth location. So this project has had a very interesting history and story, and, you know, I think we're all so frustrated about supply chain issues and continued construction issues, but we've value engineered this project more than once. And I appreciate the staff being diligent about that to try to make the numbers work, but this is now, I think, the second, maybe the third time that we've gone back and done some value engineering. So I know we've talked about, you know, potentially other things that we might want to use the proceeds from 718 North Porter. We also have some renovation funds that we're not even talking about that would still be available to us, correct?
Correct.
Is that right? Yeah. So I'm, I'm definitely in support of trying to find the funding that we need to continue to go ahead because this project, more than any others that I'm aware of, has, has been targeted for the most cuts. And if that's not right, you can let me know, but.
No, you're, you're 100% correct, and the good news is if, if we figure out, if we can get the, that money in hand from the Norman Regional land swap and sell of 718, this locks us in. This price will be locked in with trade contractors and our construction managers, so we, we feel comfortable going forward with this project and finishing this project with what we have now. It's not, no more guessing of how much it's going to cost. We have real numbers right now in front of us.
And we have really pretty solid numbers on our sale of 718 North Porter and what our proceeds from our land swap are.
Correct. We do not anticipate those numbers changing ever.
I think I would add on Councilor Hall's line of thought and progress is when there's a Norman Forward 2, we have got to do a better job. And that was a blessing because apparently a handshake of a deal that we sent to the voters fell apart because it wasn't in a contract. We made the most of it, and I think we did a good job with it, but that's wildly irresponsible, and residents deserve better. I also think we need to have locations picked out before. So, you know, we, we want this to be, I want it to be like Maps, as we've seen that continue to improve and upgrade Oklahoma City, and Maps 1 had some struggles, and Norman Forward 1 has had its own, but I'm really hoping we can learn from this because this should not be the end to investment in our community, and we've seen what we can do, but we had a lot of bumps at the beginning, and so hopefully, for future councils, we can do a little bit better job now that we've been through it. And I just wanted to get that out there because, again, Norman Forward 2 should very much be in the works. Councilor Studley.
You had mentioned about the sale of 718 North Porter, that that money may have been tied up for something else, is.
And Darryl probably, or Anthony could probably go on this a little bit more, but talking about single-room occupancy originally with that 1.2 million.
Yeah, it was just the concept of if those dollars weren't attached to anything else, one of the conversations came up, could you include that in your ARPA funding for affordable housing? And the answer is yes. It is, it is discretionary money available to the city council for use for any government purpose, so.
And what did we have set aside for the SROs right now?
Five million was the affordable housing number, and we think, we're waiting on our architect's estimate on plumbing modifications and the remodel to set it up as, I believe that number was 23, single-room occupancies and 13 one-bedroom units inside the facility. And we think we can get that done for right around five. And the opportunity on a multifamily project, working closely with Karen Canavan of the Norman Housing Authority, we'll be bringing back to you the second step in the conversation we had with Mr. Richard McCowen and what he showed us, that Richard's been working closely with Karen Canavan of the Housing Authority, and they are coming together with a, an actual strategy to begin to implement that, and we think we'll have enough dollars available to move that project forward as well, so.
Because the five million, does that, that includes, though, the money that even we were talking about with the McCowen family building those?
Correct. And, and, yeah, there have been lots of moving parts, but it's coming much more into focus.
Okay.
And in, in a project's scope and scale that Mrs. Canavan believes is much more manageable and much more realistic. and much more realistic for us to be able to accomplish.
Okay. Well, then, I'm down for, I'm glad that you found your own money. And thank you for, for doing that. And, yeah, I'm totally in agreeance.
Councilor Foreman?
My only question is, is this going to come like on the next budget year? Is this something we're trying to do like now?
We're trying to start construction. As soon, as soon as we close on that property out there, we have our contractors ready to go and start demoing. We've already done a little bit of work out there. We've got utility lines moved. And we're ready to put up construction fence and start, and start taking out that parking lot and start doing some earthwork and put in some utilities and move forward. Yeah. We're ready. So, that sell would, that sell and land exchange would immediately go into this current budget, and we would just move forward.
All right. All right. Seeing no other questions, we will wait patiently. It looks like no cries of outrage about, and it's also worth pointing out that that'll be a health building, and this goes into a health building. So, I really like that vibe of the, not just the, the health village, but the whole side on that as well. Councilor Hallman?
Just one small thing. There's only one tree on that whole property. And it might be in the middle of the building. I don't know. But if there, if there's any way we can save that one single tree.
We've talked about this.
I know. It's just a big tree in the middle of a giant, empty, empty area.
If it's not savable, we'll, kind of like they did with the library, we'll figure out a way to repurpose it and maybe add that into, to the features of this project.
Be cool to have it inside the building like as a thing.
How many of you have seen your working out?
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it.
All right. Councilor Hall?
Yeah, and just along those lines, I mean, one of the things that we are certainly learning with the previous forester, the wonderful Tim Vermillion, and now I believe we have a new forester.
Collins, Inc.
That, you know, let's, let's make sure that tree is really, is healthy and has a long lifespan too before we start.
Of course.
Building.
We are the tree department, so we'll.
I know. And we're glad we are.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, this council conference is adjourned. See you at 6:30.